Do we have anybody to do the pledge? Mr. Saffino?
We have students in the back, let them do it. We have high school students here, let them do it.
Come forward, I don't know who they are.
Madison and Kayla.
Madison and Kayla?
You guys that pledge us?
Would you lead us in the pledge, please? It's easy.
It's easy.
Alright.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think I'll do a public comment before we do the presentation. Do I have any public comments? You'll be able to speak again later on. Okay. John, I think it's...is it you that's doing the presentation?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. And introduce yourself.
Yep, I am Eric Talbot. I am the school counselor at Milton Elementary School.
I'm Erin Murtough. I'm the kindergarten and first grade special educator at Milton Elementary.
And Donna Marie Currie, the middle school counselor at News.
And so just...
Is there a light?
Oh yeah, behind the door.
I have a light.
No, this one, this one.
No, this door, inside.
Yeah, right inside. So, just a little background. There's a woman, her name is Cassie Ackley. And she was hired by the state to go around and educate educators and other staff on trauma. And its impact on schools, its impact on therapists, because, you know, a lot of people have been talking about trauma and we've seen an increase in it. And it impacts students, it impacts their behaviors, it impacts their learning. And so, I have done this presentation, I did it for some paraprofessionals a couple of years ago and some staff, and it's since been updated a little bit and tweaked. And so we thought it would be good to bring it to you, so you could maybe have a stronger understanding of what some of the kids are dealing with and what some of the things we deal with in the school. So, that's where this all came from. So, um, so trauma, so there's acute trauma, which is like an accident or a fire, something like that. But what we're talking about is complex trauma, and so, and that's very complicated. So, it's often very disturbing, some kind of horrific stuff is going on, you know, where someone's feeling hopeless and depressed and that kind of thing. So, there's threats, possibly injury. So, some of the trauma the schools are seeing are things such as like abuse, emotional, physical, and sexual, neglect, substance use, domestic violence, household substance use, mental illness, lots of divorce, and incarceration of parents. So, that's the kind of trauma we're talking about. Uh, thank you. And so, this study was, uh, it was very eye-opening to me, and it was sort of a groundbreaking study. I'm not gonna get, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna show you a video where this woman, Nadine Burke, is gonna do, I took a clip of it, a TED Talk, to kinda talk about trauma and its impact on the body in a physiological sense. So, it's quite interesting. So, I want to...
In the mid-'90s, the CDC and Kaiser Permanente discovered an exposure that dramatically increased the risk for seven out of 10 of the leading causes of death in the United States. In high doses, it affects brain development, the immune system, hormonal systems, and even the way our DNA is read and transcribed. Folks who are exposed in very high doses have tripled the lifetime risk of heart disease and lung cancer, and a 20-year difference in life expectancy. And yet, doctors today are not trained in routine screening or treatment.
I'm gonna stop this for a second.
Yeah, the exposure...
Our clip was only two minutes.
Yeah, our clip is two minutes. Somehow this 15-minute one came up. Oh, no, let me stop.
Can you turn on the volume?
No, I have a different clip.
Alright.
Hold on one second, sorry. Yeah, hold on. Just don't wanna make you sit through a 15-minute video when there's... It's already maxed out.
You wanted to create a study website? I've already done it with Wix. Let me show you how it's done. I'm in...
Just stop it. Hmm? Just stop. Alright.
In the mid-'90s...
We're gonna talk about it.
Instead of...
Because it's 15 minutes and we had a shorter clip, but we don't wanna make you sit through a video.
So, I actually have a little handout that has some visuals on it, which I really like, and it explains it a little better, so if you wanna just take one and pass it along. So, basically, the ACEs was a study that was done, and it measures the adverse childhood experiences. So, there's 10 different adverse childhood experiences: physical abuse, sexual abuse, emotional abuse, emotional neglect, physical neglect, substance abuse, parental divorce, household mental illness, mother treated violently, and incarcerated household member. So, it's a survey, and people would take the survey and they'd get a point for every one of these that the child has experienced. And some of the data that it's showing... So, if you look at the bottom, you have the adverse childhood experiences, so that trauma in early childhood. The study is showing that it leads to disrupted neurodevelopment, so actually, the way that children's brains are developing are different after they've experienced some trauma. That impacts their social, emotional, and cognitive impairment. So, a lot of what we're seeing in our schools, the social-emotional issues that our kids are having, a lot of it could be from previous trauma or current trauma that they're going through. That then leads to health-risk behaviors in their own adult lives. And actually, this study has followed people into their adult lives, and it's showing that these people who are going through a lot of trauma have more disease, disability, social problems as adults, and ultimately, they are dying earlier than people who have not experienced a lot of this trauma. So, if we look at this, this is something that I found really interesting as a special ed teacher, is that, so if you look at the bottom of the graph, number of risk factors, so out of all of those risk factors I read to you, students who have had six or seven or more have a 90 to 100% chance of having a developmental delay, which is something I found really powerful, which led to some of our other data that we collected. This, this chart, so adverse experiences get into the body, along with cognitive, emotional, there's also physical effects. So, the new research is now linking that adverse childhood experiences are linked to adult health problems, such as diabetes, hypertension, stroke, obesity, and cancer. And this graph is actually about cardiovascular disease, and so it shows that adults with seven or eight adverse childhood experiences are three times as likely to have cardiovascular disease.
And just to jump in really quick, what she talks about in the video, which is really interesting, is that part of your brain that alerts you that something's wrong, that's sending that cortisol through your body, is happening all day long by triggers. And so, she used an example of a bear, like, you see a bear, your heartbeat's fast, your airways open up, your pupils dilate, and you're gonna fight the bear, you're gonna run away from the bear, or you're gonna freeze. And so, she says, what happens when that bear shows up every single day? And I feel like what happens with a lot of our students is the bear is in the room, whether it's transition time, or it's a loud noise, or a teacher says something that triggers a memory, but the bear is showing up. And so, these students have these physiological reactions to that, so I just wanted to note that.
I went to a Spark New Hampshire conference recently, and they're doing a lot of research around early childhood, and research is showing that high-quality early childhood education is really impacting adults. Studies found that a range of $4 to $9 returns for every dollar invested in early childhood programs. Program participants were followed into adulthood, and they benefit from increased earnings. The public saw returns in reduced special education costs, welfare, crime costs, and increased tax returns, revenues from program participants later on in life. And this study was done through the Harvard Center on the Developing Child, which is where all of these graphs are coming from. So, just kind of final conclusions on the ACEs, the adverse childhood experiences, they underline most of the leading causes of death. The life expectancy for those with six or more ACEs can be 20 years shortened than those without. The cost of child maltreatment over a lifetime is estimated to be $124 billion. Productivity loss, healthcare, special education, child welfare, and criminal justice expenses ultimately are increased due to the trauma that children have been going through. So, this research kind of got me questioning our population a little bit, and so, I went around just within our elementary school building and had the ACE survey, and we filled it out based on our special education kids. We did not question anybody, it was strictly based on things we knew from either parents or things that had been reported to us. So, no kids or parents or anybody was questioned about this. And so, out of our 35 special education kids, 23 of them have had at least one adverse childhood experience. So, that's about 66% in the elementary school. We thought about trying to get the whole school to do it for the, for every classroom, but we just didn't have the time to put into it. It would be very interesting to do, but this is a small snapshot. And then, this actually breaks it down into how many of each kid have had different risk factors. So, between one and two risk factors, there were seven students, three and four risk factors, seven students, five and six risk factors, five students, and we have four students who have seven plus of those risk factors. We actually have a student that has nine, which was...
They're all, every single one.
Yeah. And these are what we know. There is a lot that we don't know. Things haven't been reported to us, we don't hear about them. So, I'm assuming this number probably would be higher.
So, to jump in on that, so what I did over at the middle school is I talked to our case managers and had them go through the same questionnaire in the same way, of like, what you know about, what do you know, what have parents reported to you? And again, nothing, like, some of them put some things what they thought, but we, I kinda threw those out, I only looked at the things of what they definitely know. And we're seeing very similar things, and looking at how I kinda put together, so of the 25 students, 10 of them have had parents who have ever been separated or divorced. Six of those students have lived with someone who was a problem drinker or an alcoholic or used street drugs. We've had five of those students who have parents who were too drunk or high to take care of them or take them to the doctor for things they need. Five of them have been physically hurt or been made to feel afraid at home. So, these are just some of the snapshots of some of the things. When I asked the case managers, every single one of these questions, of these 10 questions, one of our students have had, of those, of theirs, on their caseload have had one of these. So, there wasn't one of them that, oh, no one has experienced that. There's been at least somebody who's experienced one of these adverse childhood experiences.
We didn't have any with zero.
Correct.
Oh.
No, I mean, I don't know if I have any students, I may have students who have zero, but I don't have any of these questions who have none, so I can't say that none of our students, I mean, we have students who have, you know, parents who are in prison, I mean, that's, there's always, there's something, one student at least on their caseload has experienced something.
So, earlier I mentioned a little bit about how the children's brains are actually developing differently after having gone through some trauma. And this is a pretty extreme picture, but you can actually tell how the brain looks different after having gone through some trauma. Some of the things that happen are a smaller corpus callosum and communication between both sides of the brain, smaller hippocampus, and decreased volume in the prefrontal cortex. So, the prefrontal cortex controls rule learning, social behavior, decision-making, personality expression, and executive functioning. Executive functioning...
I was just gonna say, executive functioning is key, so it's like the ability to make decisions, impulse control, follow directions. A lot of what we see is a huge concern with kids.
So, when we think about some of the behaviors that we're seeing in our school, I think about their brains actually developing differently than your typical child. And a lot of these things are what our behavior problems are leading, are causing.
We have a little video. Right, oh, did you wanna cut it out?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
On the brains?
Yeah.
It looks like the one on the right is shrunk and kapat, like, say capacitive volume, whatever you wanna call it, compared to the one that's on the left that's normal. So, is that a normal condition that occurs?
So, basically, that's a very extreme case, but we grow kids' brains, and they grow through healthy connections and nurturing and learning and all of these things. And so, when a child is extremely neglected and they don't get that nurturing from their caregivers and are taken care of, then their brain doesn't grow.
Now, would also, wouldn't diet or have, possibly have something to do with the growth of the brain?
Of course, I mean, yes.
They're neglected, they're probably neglected in every way possible.
Right.
So, they won't be eating properly.
Right, and we have a lot of kids who, you know, need food, so...
Thank you.
Yeah. There's the video right there.
I know, I'm trying to do it backwards.
Oh.
Learning to deal with stress is an important part of healthy development. When experiencing stress, the stress response system is activated, the body and brain go on alert. There's an adrenaline rush, increased heart rate, and an increase in stress hormone levels. When the stress is relieved after a short time, or a young child receives support from caring adults, the stress response winds down and the body quickly returns to normal. In severe situations, such as ongoing abuse and neglect, where there is no caring adult to act as a buffer against the stress, the stress response stays activated. Even when there is no apparent physical harm, the extended absence of response from adults can activate the stress response system. Constant activation of the stress response overloads the adulting systems with serious lifelong consequences for the child. This is known as toxic stress. Over time, this results in a stress response system set permanently on a high alert. In the areas of the brain dedicated to learning and reasoning, the neural connections that comprise brain architecture are weaker and fewer in number. Science shows that the prolonged activation of stress hormones in early childhood can actually reduce neural connections in these important areas of the brain at just the time when they should be growing neurons. Toxic stress can be avoided if we ensure that the environments in which children grow and develop are nurturing, stable, and engaging.
Um, and I also think something important to note that Cassie has said before that has really stuck with me is, when that amygdala, or that stress response, is constantly going all the time, then this front part of your brain shuts down. And so, that is really what's needed for learning. So, I think a lot of kids, when they have that, they're constantly on high alert, oh, the noise, the teacher said this thing, they're not available for learning because that stress response is going. So, it's something she said that I thought about a lot of times.
So, childhood trauma and classroom behavior, we've mentioned this a little bit, but leads to reactivity and impulsivity, aggression, defiance, withdrawal, and in some cases, of perfectionism. Trauma in academic performance, students are two and a half times more likely to fail a grade, score lower on standardized tests, more receptive or expressive language difficulties, more likely to be suspended or expelled, and referred and identified for special education more frequently.
So, alright, I'm ready, will we do it? Oh, so, triggers, I kinda mentioned these already, but the transitions, we see a lot of behavior during transitions, so like going from recess to lunch and lunch to class and, or just transition in the classroom, okay, go from the center to this. That's, a lot of times, kids have a hard time with that. Just the relationships I was talking about, maybe something the teacher said or something a friend said reminds them of whatever has gone on in regards to their trauma, intense emotions, any kind of physical intimidation that bear in the room that I referenced before, anniversaries, so, you know, a year ago, my dad went to jail, you know, in April, so April comes up, and then we see a spike in behavior, certain assignments, and then loud noise is a big one, too. So, just, here are just a few things that we see with elementary students who have experienced this complex trauma, but just the anxiety and fear, you know, we have some really clingy students, really adult attention-seeking students, lots of visits to the nurse, always wanting to have lunch with the counselor, you know, irritable and whiny, and you might see a change in behavior, you know, all of a sudden, the students, you know, having outbursts, or they're really, they're withdrawing, they're not concentrating anymore. Somatic complaints are huge, those are physical reactions the body has, whereas, you know, the student, you, stress response in the body results in like stomach aches and headaches and cramps and all of those kinds of things. You know, all of a sudden, there's a change in performance, the loud noises, the lights, stuff like that, sudden movements, really intense reactions to like a small problem. Difficult with, difficulty with authority and redirection and criticism is a huge one for a lot of kids. Perhaps they're just not reacting at all, and they have, they're just numb emotionally, and then, you know, regression and bedwetting and thumb-sucking, but we don't, I don't, I've never really seen that in our schools, so...
So, looking at the middle school, and one thing that's really important to think about too, is that it's not a cookie cutter, it's not that we're going to say, if a student has experienced trauma, or if they have, if they score high on these ACEs, that they're going to experience any of these. We have students who have experienced intense trauma, and you would never know it, they always have a smile on their face, and they are very pleasant, they do well in school, there's not any impact that you would notice on the outside. And then, we have other students who have experienced not as much trauma, and sometimes their behaviors are really off the charts. And so, it's really hard to say, and you can't kind of put it all into one box to say, we're gonna definitely see these things. So, but we're looking at the middle school, you're gonna see the difficulty with learning. What could be sometimes identified as ADHD could also be a dissociation, where they're just not able to focus and can't focus on their learning because of all the stress that they're, they're dealing with. Issues with boundaries, some sexualized behavior, feelings of shame and guilt, problems with their relationships, impulse control, aggression, really having a difficult time responding to authority, self-injury, self-harm, either with suicide, cutting, any type of those self-injury behaviors, or even just those students who refuse to take a shower, refuse to bathe, can be a sign of some trauma in their past. Obstacle behavior and absent from school. And the same thing kinda carries over with the high school in terms of like, some similar things from what we see in the middle school, but also increasing, and we do see this in the middle school as well, the increased risk for substance use. A way of, you know, using substances to numb the pain or escape from what they're having to deal with, kinda going with that emotional numbing, difficulty with authority, difficulty with criticism, or, and it doesn't need to be a direct criticism, but if they feel that they're being criticized, or feel they, if someone's looking at them in a wrong way, that can really set some people off. They also have difficulty with their feelings. If they are having to talk about their feelings or having to be in their feelings can cause some stress and really wanna act out. Aggression and that impulsivity, lack of impulse control, and risk-taking behavior.
And just to add, there was a bullet there that said, "reenactment of trauma play." What that means is, you know, if I'm the teacher and I say something, and then I trigger that stress response or that reaction in that student, then that student's gonna play out their trauma with me. So, maybe I, you know, hit my kid, so he's, this student's gonna start, he's gonna get ready to fight me, because that's what he's used to. So, like, they, they reenact their relationships with other people, so... Does that make sense? Okay. Um, yeah, we can probably, okay.
So, kind of like how I wanted to, I was thinking about closing it, we're, there's, as a staff, as a district, we need to really look at, at taking care of ourselves as well. I mean, as, as we are working with these students, we're having to make sure that we, I mean, are not taking this trauma home, it's hard not to. Hard not for our teachers, our administrators, counselors, our parents, everybody who's working with these students to not take this stuff home. We hear these stories, we bring it home, we think about them constantly. So, we really need to make sure that we are taking care of ourselves when, when we are able to, because we cannot take care of our kids if we can't take care of ourselves. But where do we go from here? I mean, what's, I keep going on and keep thinking about, like, what is our point of wanting to present this to you guys, for you guys to be able to hear and know what's happening? And I really think that we need to have an awareness for, you know, a school board awareness for everyone in our district, we need to train all staff. And when I say all staff, I mean bus drivers and cafeteria workers and parents, everybody needs to be aware of what those trauma signs are and the risks of our students. If, even if it's the suicide risk or, or self-harm risk, or what they're dealing with at home, our bus drivers see a lot, so they should be trained to know, you know, when they're dropping off a kid at home, they see things, they see things that we don't get to see because it's beyond our school walls. You know, the lunchroom, they hear things, they know stories from kids who can't pay for their lunches and such, so the training for staff in that way. But also, looking at other districts and see what they're doing. Rochester has a grant currently, and there are people there who are willing to come and train other districts, but it's important for us to all work together because we're not alone in this, this is something that we're seeing across the nation, it's not something that's just happening in Milton, it's happening everywhere. And so, let's not reinvent the wheel, let's kind of get information and resources together. Dr. Erin Mahoney is somebody who is a principal over in Rochester, who is kinda leading that charge, and wanting to get together a group of us to kind of make some changes. And so, kind of following under that same path and kind of taking that, you know, taking that motivation to make those changes. We can try to make a trauma-sensitive school that is going to benefit every student, whether or not they've experienced trauma or not. Having a trauma-sensitive school where everyone feels safe and welcome means that everybody can learn better. It has, it's not something that is going to take away, or we focus on more attention to others, you're actually able to increase test scores and making everyone feel safe and able to learn if we're changing that kind of focus.
Quick question, so, I mean, in the short term, the student that has the nine risk factors, how are we handling that? Are they just living in their nine risk factors and they come to school? And I mean, what can we do as a school district to fix that? I mean, take them out of the, I mean, I don't know.
Right. And so, I think for the, we do the best we can with what we, I mean, some of the, and so, with those nine risk factors, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're living with those nine risk factors currently.
Right.
So, some of our students, unfortunately, were born with risk factors. When you look at that list, there are some things that are beyond their control, they were born into a situation that they already have one or two ACE scores. So, right now, we try to support them in the best way we can. And sometimes it's about meeting each student where they're at and each student differently. Because I can work with one student who will really benefit from talking and, you know, meeting with me... benefit from talking and, you know, meeting with me or going to an outside therapist or putting all these interventions, where another student, where that will push them over the edge and they're not ready for that. And so really having to tailor that and be prepared. And I think as a district, what we can do for those students with a high is to be aware as to what that is. To be aware that when they have those outbursts, it is not about us and it's not about the schoolwork. It is about what they are coming into our school building carrying. That they have so much that they're already dealing with that to actually pick up a pencil is the last of their worries.
Thank you.
Oh, and one other plug I just want to put in. There's a great documentary, it's called Resilience. It is in the library over at Newt's. It's only for one hour. I highly recommend that you all watch that. It will kind of shed some more light on Aces and really, really talks about what we're seeing in schools and kind of give that motivation for the trauma-sensitive schools.
Thank you.
Thank you ladies. Very scary.
It is.
Three must days. You're taking over.
Thank you very much. Well, she's got a quick.
Yes, I've got a quick question. When you've mentioned Erin, have you been working with her? I mean, I know her very well.
I know you do.
Oh, you know I do, okay.
So I went to a showing on the resilience movie and she led the conversation afterwards. And so when she, I got some of my information from that, it was really, she's willing to come to the district to provide PD and she really left us with that, what are you going to do next? And kind of like, what are your goals? What are you going to do next? And who are you going to talk to to get this, you know, make this change happen? And she was really strong in wanting to, again, not have us work in silos and working together as districts and kind of work together. So I have not worked with her long, but want to do this kind of proceeds with.
Yeah. Now, she really, she was a special ed teacher at the middle school when I was there and just absolutely awesome with her students. And I'm seeing Scouting in the back going, yep. And watching her when she became principal.
I hired her.
Just on.
You did, okay.
But watching her with the students at Nancy Loud, unbelievable, unbelievable. She really is amazing. So, I'm back in there, or not in there, but I'm going to follow up with her. I think it's great, thank you. Keeping in contact with her.
I have all her information.
Everybody all set?
Thank you.
Any more questions for them? Thank you very much. Moving on, meeting minutes for 11:14-18, for 11:18.
I was going to say what?
Public session.
Make a motion, accept.
Second.
I do, I do have a correction. Donna says, non-public statin, right after said the name Bob. This is Paul and it says Bob in about three words. Handle is not working, that's incorrect. It's going to fail.
It's going, still working, soon to not be.
Did anyone confirm this question she had?
Question is that one?
Opens to the start time, but this is.
I, yeah, I think I did. I'm pretty sure I did. Because I went back and looked at all the minutes. So hopefully.
Anybody else send any corrections? Melissa?
Aye.
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 Okay. Non-public session minutes for April 11th, 2018.
I'll make a motion to.
Anybody, any corrections? Melissa?
No.
Aye.
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 The only thing I got is the minutes I have here is, it says March.
That's another one.
It says 28th on the agenda, but the 14th on the non-public.
It was the 14th.
You need to change the 28th to 14th?
Yes.
On the agenda?
Yes.
Do I have a motion on March 14th, 2018?
Make a motion.
I second.
Laura, any corrections, anybody? Melissa?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Earl, you're up.
Okay, we were right here today at noon time. It was Chair Doug Schute and Bob was here, Adams was here, and the CIP was discussed whereby the town and the school are coordinating. We were here for about two and a half hours and it's beginning of trying to plan a master plan and a CIP plan between the school and the town. Bruce, Bruce did an excellent, he spoke very well, presented very well, and he's going to be here at the school board meeting on June 13th. He's going to be at the facilities at 5:00 and subsequently speak to the rest of the board, Paul Steer and Doug Schute will take the reins on that. They'll be working with Bob and Nate and myself as well as the administrative team. But the main thing is they'll meet with us at 5:00 because the CIP plan, the capital improvement plan is very important. And as the community and the school have to plan together for it, and you can see years down the line of how that prescriptively will work out so that the taxpayers can understand five and 10 years out what it is that we have in mind and that the partnership is there. Just like everything else, things evolve. People change within the town and the school, but it's incumbent to set a modus operandi, a process up by which each year, irregardless of whomever is at the commands of the respective areas, that these procedures are there. So it's been, you know, there's been certain things that have been there and the interchange will be very important. So for those of you interested, whether you're here or on TV, Bruce will be here on the 13th at 5:00 and then at 6:00. And he'll be explaining the interface between the school and the town as far as the CIP plan goes and as far as the master plan. Is there anything else Doug Schute or Bob Adams would like to add?
The main objective is of this master plan or the CIP plan is to, is to prevent spikes in our tax rate in the future by planning everything out as it goes along. And then we have a mast, in the master plan. And it's to plan major projects or even small projects as long as, and what the goal is, if it's anything over $25,000, that, that would be put in the CIP. And it's kind of bad that the rest of the board couldn't have been there today because it was, I didn't know everything and I don't know everything. And it was a learning experience for me and I think it's going to be for the board when Bruce starts coming in. He did a real good job. I commend him. And what it is, is for the town and the school and even our departments within the school system to work together in order to keep the costs down. But still, get the projects done where they need it to be done. Because we do have needs in this school system.
Bob, is there anything you'd like to add?
Just that, within the mechanism of the CIP with all of the departments and the town and the school participating in that, then you can go through a give and take process in order to basically come up with a plan to level fund expenditure year to year. Additionally, it gives everyone in the town visibility to what Doug had mentioned, any, any project, any piece of equipment that's over 25,000 that would pop up in there and hopefully cause somebody asking questions and find out more about it. So I hope with the communication piece.
Okay, I know that a lot of you had asked when commencement was. I have my friend in the back, we had conversed a while back. Don't worry, it's not going to change. It's the 15th of June. But the students and parents and so forth, we've had some discussions on the last two months of the school board meetings. I indicated hours versus days, that we would prescriptively compute the hours versus days because we're fortunate to have a very, not a very, but we have a long enough school day. As you can see, there are other districts in the state that tried to get the, the school associations, the staff associations and school boards and community on board to extend their school day to try to make up for this. And some of the attempts didn't really work well. So with that in mind, the, what we're looking at is, as you know here, the calendar would have ended on June 14th. So we're looking at the 15th is commencement and then coming to school on Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then Thursday until 11:30 for one building and 12:10 for the other. So ba, basically, we would also be in school because students love to be in school and staff loves to be here, the 18th, 19th and 20th. And then the 21st would be half day with those times that I have the new graders. So then we count one, two, three, happy vacation at around noon time, or whatever you want to call it. One, two, three. Don't worry, commencement stays the same. She's going to kill me if I ever say. Okay, so the 12th graders can go on vacation on the next day if, if, after that. And the students and parents can head out of Dodge on Thursday, the 21st. So if we get the okay of the, of the governance, we can go forth. Is that okay?
You didn't motion for me?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Do I have any discussion?
Can it be earlier?
No, no, it, no, it can. If you go, if you choose, you could go Monday and Tuesday with half a day on Wednesday. That's perfectly fine. I don't think anybody will protest.
Why are we extending it then?
Okay, so why do that?
Do we still get the?
We have two votes, we have two votes of aye.
Do we still get the hours though?
Yeah.
Do you have a half day on?
Yeah, yeah.
When?
Yeah, we're still good.
Withdraw your motion, please.
Withdraw my motion, okay. I withdraw my motion. Causing a technical problem, Earl. What's, what's the new motion you want?
We'll, we will be in school the 18th and 19th.
You have to.
And the PTA has spoken and will go to school on Wednesday.
Half a day.
For half day.
Okay.
Yay.
Remotion.
Okay, so then the last day will be the 20th.
I will second it.
20th.
Last time I do it.
Got it.
Melissa?
Aye.
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 What day is eighth grade graduation?
Monday.
Monday.
Am I correct?
It was, I wasn't looking at it, we might make a change then. So. Does that mess you up by changing it?
It's, it's an easy change. We'll make it the 19th.
Okay, for, for the folks out there.
We have to say yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
I need a vote for Maureen.
Aye, sorry.
Move forward.
Okay, for the people out there, and tomorrow the word will go out, eighth grade commencement will be on the night of the 19th.
Six o'clock.
At six o'clock.
As the chair, usually the chair hands off the diploma, I've had Stan hand out the diplomas this year. I guess I'm going to be, still have to be.
He's agreed to shake hands.
Yeah, I'm still have to be on the stage, kind of a private person to a point. But I will shake hands. Okay, that's it, all I have. Earl, anything else?
No.
Okay. Moving on, okay. Financial reports? Everybody view the operating budget?
Yep.
So that, that remaining figure has changed, it's gotten worse.
I don't know.
Nate?
Yep, as of today, it dropped to roughly 40,800.
Remaining?
Yeah.
I think what's happening, and people are going to need to be aware of this, I think we're, I, I need to say it, I think our budget's been cut too much when we go into the.
Budget season?
In budget season.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm really, I'm becoming worried about that. I think next year, I think we may even be worse.
I do have questions from PEG.
Oh, you answered.
I printed them out.
The consent agenda for PEG.
There's only a few.
Very simple this year.
I don't think we can cut too much more out of this budget.
Very simple. The secretary under the school board was over and we talked about budgeting more for next year.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is that the high school or MES?
No, that's school board.
Oh, school board, okay.
Yeah, so for both.
I'm sorry. Both?
Well.
The school board secretary is split between both schools.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Both lines were over.
I'm sorry, I'm looking for the wrong secretary.
Okay, the next one was professional development for the SAU and we got an absolutely fantastic answer that Melissa Jean is an administrator. There is no line in special ed for professional development, but she does need some professional development, so put her in the SAU. And then, an update on poor John Safina's disability insurance from last year that.
Let me.
Oh, we have a.
Let me correct that.
Oh, okay.
It's not John's.
Oh.
It was the previous principal's.
Oh, the previous principals, okay.
I know, my neck's killing me.
John Billy? You're okay, John.
Okay, so there's, there's a double charge on elementary principal disability insurance, not John, the prior one that was charged never was taken out and for Nate, just keeps calling and calling and asking and harassing.
But I'll let Nate explain why our budget is down by $52,000. He did have an explanation.
Well, it's throughout the whole report, the whole professor court. But the biggest reason is health insurance. Because when we go to encumber lines, the system only allows you to encumber what we budgeted for. So if we budgeted on one line for $10,000, a change, change has happened and we're going to spend more, it still only is incumbent for $10,000, even though we're spending more. Does that make sense?
Yes, to me.
Yeah, so.
So how do you change it then?
Basically, as you all know, if somebody gets married, if somebody has a child, you go from one person to two person, and you go from two person to a family. And you know what the rates are. It's, has a tremendous impact. So that's part of the staffing dilemma. You can plan on staffing, but you can't plan on who gets married or who has a child.
Plus you're, you're trying to guess 18 months in advance.
There's also, this, this issue is going to carry over into next year's budget too if the increase is still there. Is that not right?
Say that again.
Say, if we, an increase in the health insurance, next year it's going to be higher too compared to what we anticipated for. Is that not right?
If everything stays current, then no, it won't, it'll be the same. It's just during now, like the open enrollment, that's when everyone makes their changes. So any changes right now that's going to happen during this month, which is open enrollment, will affect next year's budget.
But that's a good point that Doug makes. When we're doing next year's budget, and Nate can look back over the last three years, what has been the trend, example, Nate, of the amount that we've gone up in terms of people may, for, for the most part.
It's going to be wrong.
It never gets less. It usually gets more for the most part. So we need to take that into consideration when we plan what that insurance number. So we need to take that into consideration when we plan what that insurance number is. Yes.
So, that, information will always be wrong, so is there a way to change when open enrollment is, so that it's closer to budget time, so our budget's not wrong? There's no way to change that?
All right, Nate, I'm trying to figure out what you just said, and I'm just on page, what is this, page four, just taking middle, special ed teachers' help, or support help, and I'm going down, and we budgeted fifty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars, um, bum, 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 and then, you've only encumbered, or is that the remaining encumbered, because that is less than the budget, but yet we're minus five thousand?
Which line did you say you were on?
Uh, page four, one hundred, twelve hundred.
Second one down.
Second one down, fifty-two, one-ten?
Yeah.
So can you, I'm trying to get my calendar here.
So, the encumbrance is based on the full amount, the fifty-eight, five twenty-eight.
Right.
So the overages is, that's how much of a change has occurred in that line since last year.
Okay, so.
Up to this point, right now.
All right, so that is covered month.
So next month, it'll be more. Next month, it'll be more than, than the fifty-three hundred dollars.
Okay.
Because the system just won't let you encumber, it won't let you encumber for more than what's in the line itself originally, so we can't encumber that line for more than fifty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Okay, all right, I, okay, I'm with you now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Trying to understand that, thank you.
Any more questions on the operating budget?
It's on the.
Moving on to the monthly revenue report, any questions?
We still have a lot coming in?
Two million sixty-one thousand, is that right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, Melissa. Anybody have any questions? Uh, monthly grant report? Is everyone okay there?
Yeah.
Uh, treasury's report for month of February twenty eighteen, do I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
All right.
Second?
Okay.
Aye.
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 Ahead of me, huh?
Yeah.
Forty thousand dollars worth of checks up there that haven't been cashed, is that not right? Four hundred thousand? Page forty-three?
Oh.
It's all right.
Nate, he's starting.
Yes, I was looking to see what he was talking about.
That's all right. How long do we carry those checks? Do we have to, ever have to reissue?
Rarely, yeah.
Cash reconciliation? Do we have a date on this? Three, one, twenty eighteen? Any questions? All right. Uh, page forty-five, food service operating costs? So how much are we in debt for, Nate? On page forty-five?
Forty-nine, right?
Currently forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-two.
Are we only budgeted being over or under twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight oh-two as of, right now, yeah.
No. Are we thinking about raising the rate?
That's actually another thing that I was going to discuss tonight.
Right now, or?
As soon as you're ready.
All right.
Food services.
Yeah, but that isn't.
Who is?
Time's almost up, price, don't worry.
I thought we heard motions for that. I thought we did too.
Yeah.
For the, for the increase?
When they were here, I thought we motioned for it last time.
No, we couldn't have, it was, it was not public, we have to do it in public.
We talked about it.
We did talk about it, yeah.
Okay.
You want to talk about that increase?
Sure. Um, the, I did the, the PLE, which is the paid lunch equity tool, which we do every year, um, according to that, it suggested we raise the price on lunches six cents, but um, through our discussion with Cafe Services as well, we are one of the lowest lunches in, in the area, so my suggestion would be to raise it twenty cents.
Now, my only question on that is, doing twenty cents, does it put more individuals that do pay the full amount down into the, that need assistance? Do I have any statistics on that?
Well, wouldn't, because it's based on the income.
It's based on their income, not, not the college price.
Well, okay, all right, but.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they go over those every year for the annual wages, for, for year to year.
Yes, yeah, the limits go up every year.
Yeah.
So they do change.
So it, yeah.
So we're raising every one of them by twenty cents?
Lunches.
Lunches?
Only lunches, I don't suggest we raise prices on the breakfast, because.
We talked about that.
Yeah.
We're going to do that, I'm sure.
Yeah.
No breakfast? What about the adults, adults too?
Uh, yes.
If we increase twenty cents, will that increase our kids are not paying, bottom line, that we?
Chris?
Yeah?
You don't mind me jumping in?
Not.
Typically, it's not going to really, you're not going to see an increase in your unpaid lunch charges, like you're talking about. If anything, it would affect participation. Uh, it might have a slight impact on the number of kids participating, but as Nate said, you're one of the lowest prices in the area, so it shouldn't have a huge difference. Um, you know, comparatively speaking, when you look at other districts in the area, even at a twenty cent, uh, twenty cent increase, it's equitable compared to everybody else around.
What will that bring it up to? Nate?
Two. Two fifty for MES and two seventy-five for Newt.
That, by doing that, and you say it's not going to have an effect on the amount of people that are in the system that might drop out, that should still mean more revenue for us.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yep.
So we should end up getting more revenue along with, so what we lose by the end of the year, we should be able to bring down.
Yes.
So do you have our, that figure in this, page fifty-four, with twenty cents instead of ten cents?
I only did ten cents.
I did ten, yeah.
So you don't know what those, that number would be?
No.
So what, what page are you on?
Page fifty-four.
I'm on, I'm on.
At three different, the contracts.
I'm only on forty-five.
Right, so I got this one then.
Yeah, it's okay, thank you. So do I have a motion to go up?
I have a motion.
I'll second it.
Melissa?
Aye.
I was going to ask if there's any more discussion.
Oh, wait, second, no.
Okay, any more discussion? Melissa, I'm sorry, yeah.
Aye.
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 Okay, it's been raised twenty cents.
Nate, what was the percentage of people that filled out the, um, forms last year for free or reduced lunch, do we know?
Off the top of my head, I don't.
But it was, it wasn't a very high number of people that actually filled out the forms, right?
But, well, um, we had, I believe it was low of thirty percent, um, that were accepted for free and reduced. I do not recall that I calculated how many actually applied, but I can do that tomorrow by.
So it's very important for families to fill out those forms.
It's very important, I can't stress that enough.
It impacts how much federal money we get.
Yep.
Toward our lunch program.
Yep. Among other programs.
Right. I was going to jump in with that, too. Title one.
Yeah.
Even your utility rates are all affected by the percentage of students that qualify.
Yep.
Yeah, because your E-rate that you get back is affected by that. So for the people on TV and the parents, it's breakfast and lunch, and it really is beneficial for your child, and, um, you know, obviously the taxpayers, so it's a win-win for all the people within the school district. Students get breakfast and lunch, and, um, the community and all of the things that just were said, title one, D-rate, and I'm glad you brought that up, Melissa, and I think one of the goals, and we've talked about this before, and it was talked about in the Grants Committee, and I don't use, Barb has indicated, Barb used, and the Grants Committee has talked about this and indicated she would be more than glad to work with the district. So I think that one of the goals that the administrative team should have, and the board should have, side our goals for next year, is to increase the number of free and reduced for all the reasons we just said. So we need, administration needs to come up with a definitive plan on how, what we're going to do to make that happen, including myself, should spearhead it. So I'm, I'm really, I think it's very important, I think it's important for the student, I think it's important for the parent, and I think it's important for, for all of those things that we said. So we can't forget.
It might be nice if the principals put that in their letter, saying if you need help filling out any of these forms, please contact me, or someone they could contact within the school.
They can contact. They can contact me.
It's on the website now, too. Perhaps one of the means with Barbara.
I don't know, the website lately's been funky, I've been hitting it and it's not coming up, so there's not linking and stuff, so.
Yeah, it was down for four days.
Yeah.
Three days in a row, yeah.
But I think that what you're saying is correct, that it really needs to be, I saw Donna was kind of shaking her head there, there needs to be a real physical, direct, mouth-to-mouth communication without people, you know, it, it really, you know, and I know from when I was young, you know, the impetus of when you can receive state assistance for things, and, but I think that there's ways to go about things in the tech age, that, um, you know, you can ensure that, that nobody knows who, who it is, you know, like, you know.
I think there's plenty of negativity out on Facebook, I'd like to see some positive things put on the Facebook, comes August, people talking about getting these forms filled out so we can get the federal aid that we need to feed our children, so it's up to the parents now to come forward and do what they need to do to help keep down costs, because we can't fill them out for you.
We can help them.
But we can help.
We can help them, but we can't do it for them, they have to be willing.
We need your income, your, your amounts that you earn. I'll sit on this form? Moving on to forty-seven, activities statement report, Milton School District, these are the classes, these stuff's accounts, both at MES and the high school and the middle school. And do I have any questions? Moving on. Okay. John, you're up, you're page forty-nine.
Um, I just, I started cutting back on, a little bit on my, what I'm putting in my board reports, and I think, I send out the email, you get the purple pages every week from me?
No.
No.
You don't?
Oh, no.
No, they're on the PTA page, the one you're on.
I usually send out to the Milton School Board email address, so that doesn't get to you?
No.
Oh, I have an SAU.
I do. I do. Okay, because I, I had, it was a, a contact, which is at Milton School Board, and I think I got it from the website, and.
It's probably all the old board members probably getting it.
And I looked, and it had all the emails.
We'll have to talk to Brandon about.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry about that, then, yeah, you're not getting anything. I'm, yeah, because I've been sending it out every week, Earl gets it, oh, I CC you on it, that's what it is.
I, I get it.
Yeah, so what I do is I send it to the board and I CC Earl on it, so.
Sometimes I reply to all, but I guess I'm just replying to you.
Yeah, I guess you and I haven't talked about it. Oh, I'm sorry about that, because I figured you had a lot of information of all the activities that we're doing, and I'm just kind of redundant.
One time Peg wrote back, I think you saw it once.
Well, I think you actually sent it, I think I asked for it once, you actually sent it to me, yeah.
Yeah, I'm really sorry about that, I thought it was coming to you every week.
Because I felt that if you sent something, people were getting it, I mean, I, not that I, I check it, but, you know, to see if everybody gets their email, but.
Well, so I got a witness, I've been sending them. I just didn't realize, but, hey, you know, what doesn't come back to me is not sent. That's interesting, okay, maybe I'll talk to Brandon and see what's going on with that. So, you know what, I'll send out a bunch to you, so you can see what's been happening, um, all the activities we've had, all the things that have been going on, but, um, so in this, I just include things that I would not put in necessarily in, in the purple page all the time, but, uh, the enrollment report, um, just how our enrollment is, kind of stayed standing, we're down by one or two, but one or two can come in, um, it's about the same as, uh, beginning of the year and as last year, um, and that's our discipline report, it's not in color, but, um, the bar, you, it kind of explained all the numbers there, and I explained it in the other one, where we're at with that. The students of fifth graders went to nature's classroom last week, and they were really good, their behavior was phenomenal, um, they really represented our school well, so that, that was a good thing. And we had our scholastic book fair, which I thought you would know about. Well, this is, I am really sorry about that, that it didn't get to you, but, um, we've got some recognition, um, for the, um, the ten years we've been doing the book fair, Scholastic sent out some things for us. Um, so that's, that's all I had in my board report, any questions?
I would like to say a special thank you to the teachers, and Ms. Heiko who did the nature's classroom, my daughter went, has not stopped talking about it, had an incredible time. For a small town, we do offer quite a bit for our students, like the nature's classroom and the different trips that they go on, and again, thank you to the teachers who went and chaperoned.
Do you have an idea of what the kindergarten number is coming in yet, like registration or?
No, no, I think we're at a, no. And I, I didn't get it to you earlier, I talked with Earl about it, so I have that, I can give it to you, and you guys can talk about it later.
Who's that professional development, the school board?
No, for, for administration and.
Oh, okay.
So, so I just kind of.
He wants us to be developed.
Yeah, he didn't want to talk about that.
Yeah.
All right, so here's that. Um, okay. Now, would that just be at MES? Okay, here we go. So, you guys can talk about that later, give it to review, but as you review it, I do talk about the professional development we've done this year, so I thought I would, and I talked about the books that we bought for staff.
Yeah.
So I had some, so I thought I'd give a couple to the school board, and I don't know if I gave you one, did I give you one?
Yeah, yeah, I, I got it.
Okay, so maybe just for the board?
Exactly.
There are three for the board, I got more if you're really interested in it, um, because we're all looking at standard-based report cards.
That we pay for those.
So, that was that.
Give me that later.
Okay, so.
Chicago, huh? Huh? Chicago? Chicago?
And John, what's the cost of this?
Um, well, it, there's different ranges in prices, it's, this is part of our priority with rent, um, the cost of the conference itself for three days is five hundred dollars, and with all the other costs, I didn't do a cost average, yeah, but it would be probably a thousand or so.
Per person?
Airfare's about three hundred, things like that.
So per person?
The five hundred?
A thousand per person?
No, this is just for administration.
Well, I know, but there are.
Okay, so you're five hundred.
Just me.
Oh, just you?
Just me.
Sorry, John.
This is from our, this is, out of the priority school money, we're supposed to, uh, part of it is, we have different, um, key factors we have to address, and part of it is, uh,[1753.01] address, and part of it is professional development for staff, professional development to come up with a leadership committee, and also, uh, professional development for administration and leadership. And leader, because they want to make sure that they're teaching all the staff to do all these great things. If they don't have strong leadership, it won't go anywhere. So, that's part of how are you going to address, um, professional development for the principal, assistant principal, and so forth.
That would be covered by the grants?
Yeah, it's part of the priority school. It's part of the set aside. But all it explains, the first page is just something I wrote out. The second and third page is actual from the DOE about what they're supposed to do with the set aside. The last page was one of the pages from the brochure that I gave you.
So, where do you stay?
What's the cost for that? That's in the brochure? That's on the brochure in the back.
I think it's a motel like around the corner.
Big refrigerator box.
I went to a conference here before, and it's, um, it's a very, it's a big center right there, and there's like several right around, and the hotels are right around there, so. And they use, I went to the ASD conference there, and they shovel people, it was all over.
We'll discuss it.
And one thing I did want to point out, it says NHA SSP, which is the Secondary School Principals Association. It doesn't mean it's only a high school conference. It's a leadership conference. And like written in the first description, it says from K to twelve. When we join our local, um, principal association, you know, Hampshire ASP, we get to choose the national, and we have state. So, that state and the national connected through both, the elementary, NA ESP, which is National Association of Elementary School Principals, and NASSP. So, it really depends. You can just check off either one. I've been at schools where, um, when I was at Rochester, Mr. Hallison had the ESP one, and I did, I can't remember, I think I, no, I actually did the elementary school one for a while, and then something was in the secondary one. So, you kind of get different, all it means is you get different information, you get targeted information sent to your elementary school for you, you know, when you join specific ones. So, you get secondary information, or you get elementary. This is just a leadership conference, a national leadership conference that's being sponsored by them, but it's not about just high schools.
So, understanding when I read the bottom, the total cost is thirteen hundred dollars.
No, that's how much money is in the grant. It's like twenty-two hundred dollars, I think, or did I give it to him?
It's twenty-two, sixty-two oh four.
Yeah, that's what's in the, that's in the money that is, hasn't been, um, we don't, not all the grants have been approved, but as far as the activities that have gone into the grant, that is money that's left for set aside for PD. We have to use money for professional development. Uh, and what we use so far is buying these books, and, um, we went to the Dusky Conference, so that's just left. So, it won't be more than that.
Is it more than, what, thirteen hundred?
Twenty-two hundred. Oh, I don't know. That's what's left in there. So, it wouldn't be more than that and probably less. I didn't do a, a cost factor there, but I could do that.
That's left.
But I'd like to see a cost factor of what it would cost for the three-day conference.
I thought you just said...
No, no, no. He said approximately, he hasn't done a cost factor.
About five hundred dollars for the airfare. I'm sorry, five hundred dollars for the conference. That's, it costs that. Three hundred and fifty dollars, they're flying out of Portland now, for the, um, airfare, and then probably another two, four, six hundred dollars for the hotel. And then there's, um, you know, of course, there's transportation, different, you know, I think meals. Meals are usually included with a lot of these things, but it would just be like transportation from the airport. And they transport you everywhere, too. So, the last time I was there, I didn't have to use a taxi or anything. It was just, they picked up the hometown they brought you there. So, five, six, seven, eight, probably about fifteen hundred, I would say fifteen to sixteen hundred. Do you have any more questions? Do you have anything else, John? Nope. Moving on.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. We want to be able to see me.
I know.
If you want, John, I'll take care of that.
Okay.
I'll wrestle with it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Night, John.
Jan, you're up.
Yep, so I gave you a handout. This year, we have students that have been taking courses at the community college. I checked great guidance, and we don't have any past history of putting those grades on the transcript. So, I asked several months ago, and then the students are now also asking, how does it go on the transcript? Do you just do a letter grade? Is it a percentage? Do they get any extra weight? I called around to other schools. Most of the other schools I talked to do not have their validator and solidator in with a weighted GPA. It's the unweighted one. We use a weighted one, so this could have an impact. So, the question then is, what's the weight that we give it? If it's not weighted at all, it would just be like an A, B, or C gets put on the transcript, no percentage at all, it wouldn't count into the GPA at all. If we put it in, we just, you know, an A is a four, a B is a three kind of thing. That is, that's equivalent to what our tech prep level courses are. A point three increase is what we give to our college prep level courses. A point four increase is what we give to our honors courses. And a point five increase is what we give to our AP level courses. So, the question I have to you is, what bump should a community college course have on the college transcript?
Um, what were you, what was your rag, rag recommendation?
Speaking of the guidance we got, it should at least be honors or AP.
My past, uh, my past experience is AP, because the college and the AP, you're getting college credit for it. So, it's the equivalent of an AP course, because anything that results in college credit, that's what it falls under. So, I, you know, but she brought it up. I mean, I, I heard what she was saying, and then she, then, then she got the info and everything, did a real concise job on this. But I think it's something that probably when our other committee meets, I think Laura and Melissa, we should probably, you know, we need an answer now, because we're like a month, month away, but I think that...
Looked in the policies, there's nothing in the policies.
I think that we need to...
I think AP.
I think we need to legitimize it. We had another parent, uh, we had another parent that was in with, our committee met, and they had a similar type of quest, question regarding class rank. So, I think that one night, when the committee meets, Jan can come in and the guidance counselors, and we can solidify that. So, again, just like the CIP, there's some things that you need to answer, because you're reactive. If you, to quote somebody, you gotta be proactive. A very, a very bright person said that one day.
I make a motion that we, um, take it as a AP level.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Aye. I got a couple of questions.
Aye.
I got a couple of questions.
Aye, sorry.
I know I don't want to say anything yet, but... So, you talked to our guidance counselors?
Yeah, talked to the guidance counselor, because first I wanted to know the history. And we went back and looked five years back, and we couldn't find a single transcript that had a college grade on it. So, then that's why we called around to other schools. Again, many of the other schools just put it on as a grade, but that's because they don't wait the grades for their top graduates. For the ones who do, again, I talked to some who don't wait, and I said, "What would you do?" And everybody said, "At least I'm on this journey."
So, so we should do a policy change there?
Right, we'll need to put it in the policy.
Where's the policy committee?
Yes, we'll put it on, we'll put it on the agenda for that.
I'm totally policy changed, adding a policy.
I'm watching Donna Marie Curry. She's shaking her head. Yes, I just weren't...
That's a good idea, Donna Marie.
Sure, yes.
This is something I don't know about, because I never was that person in school.
Well, you are now.
I'll say aye, so fast. Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing that. Thank you for the research, too. And I'm assuming a couple of students back there are...
I have to depend on my expert.
Congratulations on, on that. I think that's awesome that you guys are able to do that.
Oh, they're here already? So, let me know who they are.
They did the pledge, I think.
Oh, is that what? Oh, I thought so. Nobody told me.
That's why you did a good job on the pledge, so they thought they...
The college students did the pledge.
It was worth a point five. You just got it out at point five.
No, it's a great opportunity.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Should have been better in school, but typical male.
You can't have everything, right?
That's right. Women are smarter, usually smarter than men.
I barely made it myself, so...
I won't say anything more. Okay, um, do you have anything else, Jan? I'm sorry. Moving on. Uh, I'm going to find my place here. Lost it.
Fifty-three.
Uh, bus purchases? The only mistake before we get started on this, this is something that should be in the CIP program.
Actually, in regards to this, I'm still concerned that we're having, we have a brand-new bus in the Milton Mills area, and the radio is still not working properly. We paid a lot of money for that bus, so now we'll be asked to buy another bus, and we're having problems with the radios on our brand-new buses.
I was told that there was no problem.
Well, I can tell you that there definitely is a problem, and it's the second time I brought it up, and it needs to be addressed by our person in charge over there. But the radio on the Milton Mills bus is not getting appropriate service.
To both schools or just one?
Um, I don't know if it's to both. I know it's at least to one.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk to him about it.
So, if we're looking at investing in, you know, spending a lot of money on a bus, I did, I think the radio on the, on a brand-new bus should be working.
But is it not necessarily the radio? It could be the dead spot, the antenna, not necessarily the radio.
I'm just saying, I want to make sure.
Could be the root.
Right.
I do know there are some dead spots.
Oh, I know in Milton Mills, we have a lot of dead spots, but if, if that's part of the purchase, I want it be addressed ahead of time.
Can we, can we get, this, where's the second time? Can we get this resolved by the next time and get a report?
Sure.
Okay. I'll, I'll make sure that's...
Thank you.
Put my thumb on that.
You know, also, too, probably, um, it's like Bob's here, certain nights, Adams, we should probably have, uh, every three or four months, have Tim here.
I would definitely, I'm gonna have him come in and tell you that.
Next meeting.
Absolutely.
Because that way, he could do a little report, just like...
Because we have great bus drivers, you know? If they're having a problem, then we need to address it.
You want, we'll have Tim be on with you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And also, if you have questions about transportation, send it over to Nate and Tim and I, and, um, we'll, that's important.
I'll see you.
Because I, I don't want something to happen out there when I don't have a car.
No, no.
Okay, on to the bus addresses.
Okay, I just have a quick question. Do we have a, all right, you know I'm going to get the verbiage incorrect, Mr. Nathan. You know that, that report that you send out that has some balances in it that have different names and different balances? What's it called again?
The, the trust fund balance?
Thank you, that one that I kept asking. What's the fund balance? What, we don't have one. What are you talking about?
No, I said which one.
Anyway, do we have a balance for a bus in that one?
Um...
Transportation?
Yes, but we had just recently purchased a van out of that fund, so we only have currently twenty-six hundred dollars in that account.
Is there any money going in?
And this is, this is for next year, so this has been approved by the voters. This is in next year's budget.
So, we just got to prove which one, which one we're doing.
Okay, all right.
We're just approving it for next year. And I can tell you, this is replacing bus sixteen that has over three hundred thousand miles on it.
And we got our money out of it.
Do you know what year it is?
To the demolition derby without me?
No.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
It just dawned on me also that, you know, we're dealing with the end of year and graduation and everything, but, Tim, we are planning on having him in, in the next three months, because we have a couple of different proposals in and around transportation, dealing with the school budget, that, and as we begin that phase, we're going to begin that very early. We talked to, um, Sean, who's in charge of the DC this year. We had a meeting, I guess we didn't touch on that, with Doug and Peg and myself, with him. And we decided, and we're informing the administration, we're going to start everything really early. So, would that be great? Remember, we met with Sean about starting the budget process early. So, that's kind of a long-winded thing, but the reason I'm saying that is we have some bus proposals that we're going to bring to you. I don't want to start a lot of community, like, what, what are they going to do? We'll wait for that, so that we can get that. But Tim is going to be in for that, because we're going to start the budgetary ideas regarding that early. So, I just wanted to let you know. Right?
Mm-hmm. No.
So, we need a motion, right?
Yes, we do.
So, we'll make a motion to go based on this letter? So, WC, Cressy, and Son?
Yeah.
For the bus?
For eighty-three thousand?
Eighty-one hundred seventy-three dollars.
I second that.
Is there a sense?
I did ask, well, it's already in here, but I did ask completely preferred before I wrote the letter. Do I have any other?
Aye.
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 Okay, it's on its way. All right, that's done. Okay, Special Education Trust Fund Discussion?
Uh, we've been discussing this with Doug for about two months now, and Melissa Jean has been involved with the discussions, Nate and myself. Nate will give you the current status and what his rag, recommendation is, is to be A.
Well, basically, um, we, we can't go request funds, like, just a flat amount. It has to have invoices involved. So, basically, Melissa and I went back and saw all the costs that we've done in special ed that have been unanticipated. And, um, we had a range, but to be honest, um, in light of the last expense report, how it dropped down to roughly forty thousand dollars, it's my recommendation to do eighty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents at the trust fund. That would cover all the costs of, um, unanticipated expenses.
Was that eighty-four thousand, what, what?
It was eighty-four thousand, six hundred, forty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents. So, basically, um, with the board's blessing, we're going to have a public hearing next meeting, and we're going to request that, that specific amount.
Uh, fifty thousand hopefully will come back in using the fund balance...
Surplus, yep.
Oh, the surplus.
That, that we have. And that includes what is returned from the SAU, right?
It does, yep.
So, but actually, the last time we spoke, it was sixty-five, so it looks like...
Yeah, I didn't even say that number, because it's a little scary that it's at, down to forty thousand.
Yeah, because I think the last conversation, Doug and I, were you part of this last one? The A eighty-four?
I think so.
Yeah, she was.
Yeah. So, we can throw that around. Is the sixty-five still out there, or are you more comfortable go...
Well, it's going to be the board's decision, but basically, we're thinking sixty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-three were added district costs that we weren't anticipating. So, that would have been the lowest number. So, that would've been the lowest number. Originally, I was going to recommend that, but, so really, we could do anywhere between the 65 and the 84.
Like I've always said, with special education, we never know what unanticipated costs we are going to have. We need to be prepared so that we are not caught in a really bad situation.
Yeah.
For instance, how many, how many unanticipated special ed students do we receive this year?
It, it comes twofold, you can answer that, but it also comes from a result of new IEPs, as you well know. So that, when the least restrictive environment is, is ascertained for student, it might go from a one-on-one aid, um, it's not necessarily, students are classified, and then there, then the amount of intervention that you need will, will then increase. But Melissa can speak to that. We had, at one point, a very short time ago, 45,000, just happened like that, right?
Well, I mean, there's, our kids will be in and out all the time, but the, the three students that we're referring to, were students already in our district, that, for reasons we needed to find another placement for.
See, that, that's why I said early before, I'm becoming concerned, I think we're cutting too much in the operating budget every year. I think next year, I think we're gonna be even worse, worse off. I think what saved us this year is the money coming from the SAU that we're gonna be able to help us out.
Yeah.
And also, go to the education fund. So, I think we need to be extremely cautious when we make up 2019 and, and 2020's operating budget.
You know, I think that Bob behind you, who's tape, taping this, Bob Carrier, he actually, when we were sitting out here as an administration and presenting the board, Bob Carrier said, "I'm worried about this," right? You know, and he had indicated, "Are you guys cutting yourselves short on this?" So, this goes back to what Doug had said, that we're going into this bare bones thing. Melissa Jean is doing everything she can, and we're doing everything we can, but this is something that, when it comes to budget next year, we really have to take a, a look at, knowing all the things we just talked about.
Now, we need the motion and the second to, why don't we want to...
I motion for the higher amount, as I have always done when it comes to special education, to make sure that we are covered the best that we possibly can.
So, you're going for the 84?
Yes, I am.
I'll second it.
649.83, am I right?
Yes.
Does anyone have any more discussion?
I, um, you don't need to vote tonight, it was informational, you're gonna be voting right after the public hearing.
Okay, but we're gonna proceed with this.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
That's all I need, yeah.
Okay, sorry, everybody.
So, just to review, when would the hearing be?
It's gonna be the 23rd, May 23rd.
May 23rd?
Next meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's...
There's actually, there's a handful of things on that meeting, on that public hearing, there's like four different things.
What are the other three?
Uh, unanticipated revenues, and then some more expenses from trust funds.
Which trust funds were you on?
Uh, the ones we talked about, facilities.
You need to be checking on something.
I'll check on that one, but the other ones are definitely...
Okay, all right, I'm gonna make sure.
So, those will be on it.
Okay. What was the last one? I thought you said there was three.
There was two, uh, there was two unanticipated revenues.
Okay, all right.
And just so the public knows, we are legally obligated to meet special education needs, we have no choice, and we need to be prepared.
Okay, I think that's, we're on to old business, anything?
Yeah.
Nothing? Uh, committee and board member reports?
Yep. So, we went over, Bob presented to us the air handler, we talked about the air handler the last time in the elementary school. So, we have a, a, uh, services and scope of work letter from Herriman, referenced the, the two-phase, um, project that this is right now. We talked about Phase One, which is the initial investigation, site investigation, reviewing, reviewing the layouts, verify wall floor types, all that kind of stuff, to, to get ready to figure out what we're gonna do for a replacement air handler in the elementary school. Um, that way, we can get Phase Two underway, which is putting out the bids and all that kind of stuff, but we can't put out bids till we know exactly what we're dealing with. So, um, the cost of that whole engineering portion is $2,850, um, with an additional $200 above and beyond for reimbursable expenses. So, we need to present that to the board tonight, to see if we can get that approved, to get the engineering portion of this done. So, that's the major thing we went over tonight, so we need to...
And, and we also decided to take it out of next year's budget?
Yeah, and that's gonna go out of next year's budget, it's not gonna come out of this year's budget, so, um, that'll be, that'll be effective July 1. So, we just need to get a vote into...
I'd like to motion for, for, um, $3,050 for them to start Phase One.
I'll, I'll second that, if you haven't tired already.
No, I have not.
No, what we need to realize, this is what, for six rooms in the library?
Correct.
Right.
Yep, at, at MES.
Correct.
Okay, Melissa?
Aye.
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 So, and other things that are gonna happen, uh, after July 1st, the, the underground oil tank, the monitoring system, has a slight glitch where they need to repair that, replace some wiring underground for that. Um, so that's gonna be presented for the next time, correct? Just, just some information. And, uh, we had the water leak repaired at the elementary school, um, that's all taken care of. And, we're looking at doing some stuff in next year's budget for new, the new floor scrubber machines. So, some more information to follow on that.
Now, that wiring running will be low voltage, it'll be 24 volts.
Yep, low voltage wiring. For the signal system, if there's a leak, it sets off, you know, a speaker on a panel or a light.
This isn't the...
Not the sump.
Okay.
Not directly related to the sump, it's all part of that oil control system, but it's not the sump itself.
That's the one below the chimney, the, the bricks are loose, so you don't wanna walk on near it and think of it.
Bunk you in the head.
Bunk you in the head, it's temporarily fixed off.
Wire?
No, no, walk, walk in that area.
Yep, so that's all we did for, uh, facilities. Do you have anything to add for us?
Well, I was gonna say that we had met with the budget committee chair.
Stole our thunder.
And did a great job, but Earl stole my thunder, so, in case anybody didn't hear, um, we met to go through the schedule for next year and just try to move everything up, because this past year was really kind of a zoo at the end of budget season. And, you know, pushing and pushing and pushing, and, so, um, Sean Perot is extremely proactive, and Bob back there. And Sean put together a fantastic schedule and calendar for both the town and the school for next year, so, so you didn't steal all my thunder, just most of it.
Everybody did feel that the, uh, school ended it last year very well, that we were...
We were good.
That the board and the administrative team had, and Nate, of course, had prepared everything, and they got, they got, they got necessary stuff, and, what I failed to say last time is Nate was at the meeting, too. I said, you and I and Doug.
Oh, was Nate?
Yeah, Nate was...
Getting Nate.
He even ate pizza, we even allowed him to get a pizza. Okay, sorry.
The thing I'm gonna say on that CIP program, I'm gonna keep my thumb on it, because we definitely need to get that done this summer. So, we may be meeting, well, maybe twice this summer, when normally, we only meet once.
We did recommend putting some sort of committee together on that as well, so, CIP Committee is strictly to work on that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point, that way, you can all spread out and perform your team roles, you know?
Yep. And also, the other thing we're gonna be possibly doing this summer, we've been asked to, doing a teacher's negotiation, so, we as a board are gonna have to meet and discuss what, what our proposal will be to them for the following year. Laura?
Rec Commission, I was supposed to go to a meeting, there's a question of reference to the Rec Commission, um, because they hadn't been in operation for a year, so the selectmen were looking into that. Um, they still had a meeting, I'm not sure if they had or did, because it was questioned with how many members they actually had. Um, I was sworn in the other day, so I'm official. And Les has been appointed to, by the selectmen, to the Rec Commission also, so, we have a meeting on the 16th.
So, you don't think it's personal, I think they don't like it, because that's why they're meant to meet?
No, I don't know what's going on, so...
But you want me to...
But the, but their bylaws and all that says they're supposed to meet, and if they miss so many meetings, so their selectmen were questioning if they were actually functioning in commission, so...
Let us know if you don't meet on that day, because I'll go to the selectmen and meet with them also.
No, I'll, I'm gonna go to the meeting, but, like Ryan initially canceled, said they're questioning it.
Well, I know you're gonna go, but in just case they don't hold it, I'm saying.
They should, I think they...
We've got a lot, we've got a lot, we've got a lot with our parks and recreation, we can do a lot more.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
I'm hoping for PTA and rec to come together somewhere and get stuff going.
It's a good idea, I like that.
One other thing on facilities, Earl forwarded you all the letter we got from the state today, saying that they did grant us the $46,000 for the...
Yeah, you did, he sent it to this little bit of...
Yes.
I can't check it out.
During five, something.
So, right after five.
That, they probably did.
That it would be, Paul and Doug can, uh...
That's great.
Are the QBs of that one, but, basically, I indicated to them that it just has to be paid out if we do, do this by April 1st, 2019. So, that means that when the facilities, you can...
So, another new January, I mean, July 1st thing. We can vote to approve our percentage of that, and then get that put in, so we'll make our slides.
Excellent.
Yeah, so, that's 11,000 some.
Actually, I came up with that number when I divided that by 20%.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
So, what is it?
No, that's, though they, that's...
They gave us 80%, so you have to...
It was six, 60,000, and they gave us...
Okay, that's why I'm off.
So, you, you would...
Divided by 0.8.
You took 20% from what they gave us.
Multiplied times 0.8.
We need 20%.
When you're paying your, your hard work, five of us go out, you...
You were here when I said, what's, what's the 20%? He says one-fifth, not two-fifths.
And you're the one that's had two drinks.
Superintendent.
We're going public?
Non-public?
No, public.
Oh, okay.
We're public comments.
What are you? Let me do public comments, and I'll, no, you can speak first, and I'm gonna go to the public.
Okay.
All right, can I just...
Go ahead.
Ask a question on that one? Have you heard anything about any other money and all of the other things that were on hold?
No, still awaiting funding.
I have one quick thing, too, after, after you're done.
But I'm glad they gave us the others.
Do you have a lot of things?
No, just a couple that were...
Listen.
Paul wants to talk.
The, the other public?
One quick thing, plant sale this weekend, right?
Plant sale this weekend, Saturday. Come get your flowers and vegetables for Mother's Day.
Eight to five, eight to 11?
That's on Friday, sorry.
Come buy things.
Want me to look it up, to be sure?
Buy things, flowers for Mother's Day. In the greenhouse.
What was the hours again?
Eight to 11.
Eight to 11?
At Newt?
At Newt, in the Newt greenhouse.
Yay, I'll be there.
They're also including natural fertilizer that was donated to the greenhouse that they're selling. So, if you need to fertilize your gardens, they have it over there.
What animal?
Do they show it for you?
You want a shot?
All right, thank you, Alpaca, very much for that.
Okay, ready? Okay, um, hold on, da, 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 da. Oh, the big issue is when we have private session at the beginning of a meeting, a lot of the public that have come are very upset that they come, have to leave and sit outside for two hours. Um, I don't think it's fair for, when we have public coming, that they have to leave. So, I think that if we're gonna have a private session regarding certain issues, that they can be scheduled either at the end of our meeting, or on a different day, but...
Like, for instance, what?
When we have some of our...
Student hearings.
Yes, student hearings.
Okay, we brought this up before, can I?
Go ahead, yeah.
We brought this up before, for instance, on the agenda tonight, we have Chris Farah scheduled for 7:00 PM. What time is it?
Yeah.
We can't set times.
No, I understand, but I'm just saying, what we, when we do have public that come out for a, a six o'clock meeting, I don't think it's fair that they come in for five minutes and then have to go sit for two hours. And people have been complaining, so I just wanted to raise that again.
Okay, thank you.
Can we set our regular meeting to seven o'clock instead, and then have those other meetings start at six?
Well, I guess a six, six and one half dozen of another.
I know, but I'm saying...
You know, we can make the public wait to the, at the beginning, or we can make them wait to the, to, you know, the non-public at, who knows, and I mean, now it's eight o'clock, when they're scheduled for, yeah, just hang out, wait.
Right.
So, I assume there's people here for the non-public, and they're waiting for two hours. You're gonna wait one way or the other, unless it's a real smooth, which they never go smooth, they always question, 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 question.
Right.
So, it's cut and dry.
So, the other thing is, where are our school policies posted? I know that that is, um, something that has come up, where do we post them?
Online.
We do have them right on the website, right?
Yep.
So, people who are out there asking where our public school policies are, they're on our website.
Actually, Kathy just spent numerous hours cleaning it up, too.
Okay.
So, it looks really good.
Those are the two things that were brought to my, up to me that I was asked to bring up, so that's all I have.
Well, I, I have to say myself personally, on that first one, I had the same concern too, because I don't like it when we have to put the public outside, and they get discouraged and go home, and don't have a chance to say what they wanna say, because they're the taxpayers, so...
And I get that as well, obviously, but...
Yeah.